I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dankert.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember King.
Present.
Austin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
Hagan.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Enright.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
All right, everybody's here, good. Item number one is a motion for adoption of the agenda with the modifications that you have.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number two is a motion approving council minutes from December 3rd, 2018, and truth in taxation hearing minutes from December 4th, 2018, need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And, what most people are here for, under recognition and awards, we have people that have worked for Austin. Mark, how long have you been here?
Thirty-three and a half years.
Mark, I have first, thirty-three and a half. Kathy, is Kathy here? How long have you been here?
Thirty-two.
Wow. Jeannie, I know isn't here. Bob Baster?
Yep.
How long, Bob?
Little over twenty-six.
Okay. And Steve Scott, we know Steve, and Mike Pratt, we know Mike, and Orlando. Am I missing somebody? Who's Lanny? Okay. Who'd I miss? Is that it, three of them? Okay, well, Mark, why don't we start with you? We have a plaque for ya. I think I have a plaque for everybody here. Do you want to say anything? I worked with Mark, how long did we work, well, until twelve years ago?
Speech.
We hardly ever saw each other.
Speech.
Speech. Want to give a speech?
No.
Who's your favorite detective?
Uh, Thompson.
You like to shake your hand, Brad, that's what we normally do. And next, we have Steve. Mark, because you're up here next.
Good luck to ya.
Should I tell him that you taught me everything I know?
Yeah, didn't take long either.
How many, what's it get, Steve? How many years?
Thirty-three years, thirty-seven years full-time, forty with my part-time.
You have a connection to the police department too, don't you?
Yes, I did.
One of my favorite officers. Who?
Dwayne Purnerman.
Yep. So we always would see Steve through the years of your life. Well, here's your plaque, thank you, and once again, thank you for your service. Kathy? We talk about the city. I mean, the people that worked for Austin.
Thank you, Steve.
They really are the same.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Dwayne got me four times when I was seventeen.
Bob?
Thanks for the grat.
Thank you, congratulations.
Twenty-six years.
Yes, sir.
Full-time grandma, you got bad.
Okay.
And did you know that the city administrator got to write a plea to go get a load of blacktop?
What city administrator? This one?
This one, yeah.
He likes that stuff.
It was, it was the highlight of Mike's career.
He worked hard. Lanny?
Congratulations.
It was a pleasure working for the city of Austin.
Congratulations, Bob.
Yes, sir. Great. Good job.
Thank you very much for your service.
You're welcome, I enjoyed it.
Lanny?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Twenty-three.
I've never met you.
Thank you.
I talked to you once, and I'm glad you made it. It was really good. Thank you. And thank you, really.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lanny.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Lanny.
And Mike.
Congratulations, Lanny. That's terrific.
Mike? How many years?
Twenty-eight and a half.
Wow, they probably even give you a pension, don't they?
Not ever, Matt.
I know, I know.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Mike, congratulations. Mike, thanks.
You bet.
The only small gift I can give you guys is tell ya, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the year.
Unless you'd like to.
Getting a few? Well, thank you, thank all you guys, I mean, Austin is a... And like I said, if you guys want to get up, we won't take it personally. Number four. Ah, gee, y'all afternoon. Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed number five, under public hearing is a resolution reviewing a tax abatement application from New Horizons LLC. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor, members, we have an application. The estimated value of the home is four-hundred-and-six-thousand. It's in the Nature Ridge subdivision at 2006 13th Avenue Northeast by New Horizon Homes. This is another spec building. Probably a good time to remind people, our housing tax abatement, at least at present, is scheduled to expire in December 31st of 2019, so if you're sitting at home, wondering about a new home in Austin over the winter and build in spring, we'd encourage you to take a look at that, take advantage of five years of no new property taxes. Otherwise, this is a public hearing, council action is requested to approve the abatement as it's in conformance with our adopted policy.
Okay, we need a resolution either adopting the five, or approval or denial of the abatement.
So moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, six is a resolution, hearing A, on the five-year capital improvement plan. Mr. Dankert.
Yes, Your Honor, this is a public hearing to authorize and review the 2019 through 2020 capital improvement plan that the council, or that staff have been working on and have been presented to council over the last couple of months. In total, we're proposing to spend one-hundred-and-twenty-three-million, two-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand, three-hundred dollars over the next five-year period, but again, the funding sources are what drives the expenditure, so in that amount, there's some grants that if they don't come through, the project doesn't come through. But again, this sets the path for 2019 for department heads to start getting their ducks in the road, to get those expenditures or projects done, and kind of sets a target for 2020 through 2023.
Counsel? If there's no questions or comments, we need a resolution.
It's a public hearing, Your Honor.
Pardon?
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Is there anybody here that wants to make a comment on this? It is a public hearing? If not, counsel?
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes, seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you, seven is at least two resolutions, a public hearing for the adoption of a street improvement assessment on one property on the Fourth Drive Southwest project. The amount to be assessed is one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars at four-point-seven-five for fifteen years. Mr. Lang.
This is a project that we, was a two-year project that we completed in 2016 and had carryover work into 2017 on Fourth Drive Southwest from the Trow Creek Bridge south to County Road 28. This was a joint project that we worked on with the county, partnering with them. Some of the design, some of the funding, also some of the grant opportunities as part of the project, was a combination of city and county collaboration. In this case, we did assess prior properties as part of the project. This is one holdover property. This amount, as indicated as one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars, represents curb and gutter assessment. The way we handle our street assessments for curb and gutter is, the very first time that the curb and gutter goes in, the adjacent property owner is assessed for that curb and gutter. In future projects, they are not reassessed for curb, they're only assessed for street. So in this case, there was actually, the street in front of this property was in fairly good condition from a previous sanitary sewer project that was done by the county when it was Dinsmore Acres. Sanitaries, the county extended sanitary sewer out to these properties, they rebuilt the street at that time. As part of this project where we were coming through, we regraded the roadway, added curb and gutter, added a bike trail all the way from that Trow Creek Bridge south to County Road, and therefore, we only assessed them for the curb and gutter. That's why you see the lower assessment than normal of one-thousand-one-hundred-seventy dollars, and that is a brief description of the project.
Counsel? Comments? Questions? Public hearing, is anybody here that came here to talk about this? Come on up here, give us your name and your address.
My name is Scott Wormerger, live at 2403 Fourth Drive Southwest.
Yes, Scott.
So, I am opposed to pan this assessment for a number of reasons. I noticed that there's a couple of new members up here that weren't here before. I, I'm basing this off of it's not raising my value of my home, which is state code says you have to raise the value of your property by the amount of which the assessment is. At least, your value has to go up at least that much. So a lot of stuff happened on this project. I'd like to start, I went through and I asked some people, most of them had no idea about this project, and I just asked them some real general, kind of common sense questions about property value. And they're all yes or no questions. If you don't mind, I'd like to ask the council these same questions, just to raise your hand on yes or no, and be real fast. Does reducing the size of your yard add value? Yes or no? The questions, when I asked them to these other ten people, they were unanimous, everybody said the same thing right away, every time. So I can just ask you this way then, does anybody disagree with that? It doesn't...
You know, I don't care what everybody says, because I can tell you, everybody I talked to was happy. Tell me, you and the council, we don't care about what, you know, you're saying the neighbors say.
Well, I'll tell you what. People don't think that it raises the values.
David, let's give David a minute here before we continue.
I don't think it's appropriate for the witness to come forth and make inquiries with the guard of the council. This is a quasi-judicial decision, and at this point in time, it would be inappropriate for you to respond to his questions.
Okay.
That's my legal opinion.
And, we're not going to make any determinations tonight then, because, I mean, we can hear your side of it, but...
Well, I'll just tell you what people answered. I asked, does reducing the size of your yard add value? Straight across the board, no. Does not add value by reducing the size of your yard, which, when my neighbor did, the title, the property lines were all jacked up before, so my neighbor did a quick claim deed, gave me forty feet, which, also, they did it the last day of the year, so that, I got taxed and they raised my property value because I gained forty feet, which I did a quick claim next year, and they, that helped reduce it. So the city's even saying, bigger property is more valuable. So, they took prop, they took eleven feet off of my property, so it gave me eleven less feet, nine-hundred-and-ninety square feet less yard. Hey, does replacing your lawn with a, I had a nice lawn, they replaced it with pretty much gravel and a lot of weeds. I found this out when I went to landscape it, and I was digging the holes for my puddings, and all of a sudden, I needed a pick to get through the yard, it's hard as a rock. Somebody, a friend put a sign in my yard, a campaign sign, and they couldn't even push it in, they had to move it back to the old property. That's how hard it is. And everybody said, no, that does not add value. Does changing the water flow in your yard from flowing naturally away from your house to flowing towards your house, and having a drain put in your yard, does that add value? Right, straight across the board, everybody said, no. What happened is, they put this in, the water now flooded out my driveway last year in my sidewalk, so I was constantly going out there trying to push water off my driveway because it doesn't flow through the ditch like it used to do. Now it flows towards the house. And everybody said, no, that does not add value. Does having a large hole and tracks from heavy equipment put in your yard add value? And maybe I should show you guys pictures so you know what I'm talking about here, because I've got some pictures.
I just like to say, as you're looking for your stuff, they did my street this year, I have half the frontage that you have probably, and it cost me almost three thousand dollars.
Look at these pictures.
My house isn't worth as much as yours. I think we ought to jack it up a little more.
Those pictures show my sidewalk and driveway, just one day, it got worse than what that was, it actually went completely across my sidewalk and driveway.
Mr. Wormerger, can I say something before you finish? And I'm going to allow you to finish. We've all had our streets done, mine was this year, three, almost three thousand dollars, not near as big as your frontage is. My house isn't worth as much as yours. You got the deal of a century for eleven-seventy, and you're in here screaming about it. You're not going to get any sympathy from anybody that's had their street done in the last ten years, but go ahead.
I don't think so. I've had it, I got it done, the week after I bought this house, they tore up my road, and I paid an assessment that I just paid off last year, so I'm just paying off one assessment, and now I'm getting another one. So anyways, that picture there, that's the kind of water flow, it got a lot worse, it actually got to the point where it flowed into my neighbor's yard, who was an eighty-some year old lady, and it would freeze at night, and then it would get water in a day and freeze at night. I had two people fall on my driveway, because then it would snow on it, and you couldn't see it.
I've fallen on my block three times in the last two weeks. But go ahead.
No, that's good. Did you? This is something that was caused that never happened before, until they did this project. That's the thing. Does, uh... Does having a large hole and tracks from heavy equipment in your lawn add value? The answer was, everybody said, no. What they did was they dug a hole, because they put a, they decided they were going to just put a hole in my yard and make a drain to go out and drain the water out, so that, hopefully, it won't happen again. We don't know that, but now I went from a real nice yard, which I actually had on the garden tour a few years ago, to this, where it's a big hole, a big thing with equipment, because they never fixed it, they left a big pile of dirt, which I didn't care, I would use that, but they left a hole there that I had to go fill myself.
Stephen, let me just ask you, there's been other people, or, Kim, I don't know who does this, that have said that their property wasn't brought back to, I think, the old sheriff for one, I mean, and we did something there, didn't we, Stephen? And if he had a hole in his yard, wouldn't we have done something on that?
These are all things I've talked to Mr. Wormerger about before this meeting.
Okay, we can have a special meeting if need be, well, I'll talk to you after the meeting.
And then you can kind of see the water flow in my yard, you can see right where the, right where the water piles up, where it used to go into the ditch here, and now it just piles up, and these are from later in the year, it were just going up into my yard instead of draining out through the ditch. The hole in the yard was there until just when it started, the ground started freezing, I decided to go myself and use some of the dirt and fill the hole, so nobody would get hurt in it. But the tracks from the equipment that they brought in, stuff is still there, dug down, it's all got to be fixed, which, you said the project is done, so I guess it's on me to fix it. But people said, no, that does not add value. Is it safer to have traffic drive faster in front of your house? Everybody said, no. This was brought up before, the wider the road, the faster people go, and it's pretty obvious, people are driving faster there, I see it all the time. Is it better, safer to have more people walking in front, in front of your house or biking in front of your house? To have more people, or before, like, there was, there was less. Everybody said, no, it's not safer, and it's not better. I actually had something stole out of my front yard first time since I've lived there, since this project happened, and it was a big concrete sculpture. Is it fair to be assessed if the money was not needed for the project and was told it's going to be, that our money's going to be used for a different project? Everybody said, no. Why would you pay for something that the money's there and it's going to go to a different project? Is it acceptable for someone to damage your property as long as it doesn't affect it structurally? They said, no. Hence the other picture I have here. My driveway now looks like this. What happened was, they screwed up the driveway, they had to repour it, they repoured it, a section of it. They didn't block it off, and I poured concrete many times. You always block it off, they didn't block it off, it was garbage day, the garbage man took the garbage can out, wheeled it back across, now I have footsteps and tracks from a garbage can going right across my driveway, right in the cement that you cannot get out. And, and my driveway was a year and a half old when this project, when we got told about this project. I just paid to have a new driveway, and which they cut eleven feet of it out and turned it into a street. So, since some of the, some of the council members weren't here last time when this went to the council, I would just like to do a quick recap of what's happened in our neighborhood here. Some of this goes back because it has an effect on what happened with the current one. You know, I bought this house in 2001, we got annexed into the city right after that. When they put the, when they put the new road in, they raised the road, instead of leaving it, they actually raised it, which comes to effect with my...
I'm going to give you a couple more minutes, but I can't give you endless time, okay?
I'll make it as quick as I can. So they raised the roads up, road up, so then a year and a half before this project, you know, if they would have said, hey, we're going to do this, we went to, me and my neighbor went to pay to have a road put in, so we, our drivers got raised a little bit to meet up with the road. And that's part of this problem with the drainage thing. We, we get the letters, we talked to neighbors, I talked to some neighbors and some other people in town that had similar areas, they don't have a sidewalk, they don't have a bike trail, and I asked them, do you want, would this add value if they did this to your house? Widen the road and put a bike trail?
I don't care what other people say, it's between us and you.
Well, but, but we're trying to get a sense of the value of the property, of it raised the value of the property.
Everybody had talked about this, thought it was silly.
If people and similar things say, no, it's not going to raise it, then I don't know how it could raise it. People, you know, a lot of people from the road showed up, not one person that lived on that road that it directly affected, that showed up to the meeting, was before this project, not one. Everybody was against it. It passed anyways, and, and so now we're at where we're at today. We asked about the money, they said, how much money it costs, where they're getting the money from, all it was paid for, somebody said, well, what's going to happen? Well, why do you need an assessment? And they said, well, we're going to use that money for some other project, so why would you have to pay an assessment for something that's already paid for? Last winter, I had the problem with the drainage, that certainly doesn't raise the value, I got my concrete messed up, it was brand new, and now it's got tracks in it. Ask yourself...
Mr. Wormerger, you're repeating yourself now, it's like, can we move forward with this?
Okay.
Or I'm going to shut it down.
Okay, so I lost value, lost eleven feet of my driveway. I got semis now, I don't know if there's city ones that are going through there, it never went through before, so I got bigger trucks going through that I never had to worry about before.
So you're not having to hit people with your street more?
The thing is, it did not raise the value of my property.
Okay.
It's real simple, that it didn't raise the value of my property, if anything, it made it worse. And, that's why I think, you know, I'm just paying, I just paid off the assessments from the last project they did, that they had problems, that caused me a lot of money later on, and I don't want to have another one where I have to pay, it's raising my taxes, they already said my tax is going out, now I've got to pay an assessment. Hell, you get to a point where you can't afford to even live in your own house because of all this stuff, and it's just not fair. You know, they would have done everything right, and, you know, that'd be a different thing, but when, when the project is screwed up, they pay people that obviously don't know what they're doing or something to do this, you shouldn't have to pay for it.
Are you done? You're done? Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Your Honor, I would like to determine what the procedural setting is. Mr. Lang, there obviously was a hearing on this project some time ago. Was it, Mr. Wormerger filed an objection and his hearing then was, his property in the hearing on it was continued?
His property was removed from the previous assessment rolls. Okay. So we have started the hearing process all over for him sometime later than all of the other properties.
And has Mr. Wormerger filed a written objection to the assessment?
No, he has not.
I went to the meeting where we had to object, I, then I was told in...
But, Mr. Wormerger, the law requires that you file a written objection, okay? And if you haven't done so, you should do so tonight, otherwise, your appeal, you'll have no rights to appeal. Do you understand that?
Okay.
Okay, so, if the council votes to adopt this assessment and you have not filed a written objection, by the end of this meeting, your appeal rights are forfeited. Do you understand that?
Okay.
I'm trying to be fair and let you know what your rights are.
Okay.
Okay, so, we're at the point where, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Wormerger? Any comments? People in the audience, do you have any, anything to say? Okay, the only thing I'm going to say is, like I said, a lot, people here have had their properties done, nowhere near what you got done, for more than, probably about seventy percent more than you're paying. You don't have my sympathy, you were against this project, adamantly against it before a shovel hit the ground, so with your whole list, can I finish? Your whole list that you've been making up this whole time, I mean, you were just, and, and Stephen told me he's talked to you and tried to remedy, we've done everything we can, so, the council can't sit here now and say, well, maybe we, I mean, we've done everything we can, we bent over backwards for you. Eleven-hundred-and-seventy dollars assessment to get a new road, and you're not happy?
Make it right, make, drop the road down to where it should be, so my water drains out.
We're not going to lower the road for you.
Get rid of the tracks in the driveway and stuff, and the drain and stuff, and I wouldn't be here today. But when you screw up my, my yard, it devalues my yard, and that is not acceptable, and I shouldn't have to pay for that. You know, I'm already going to get, charge taxes, extra taxes because you're saying that it's going on.
I've seen people with damage that have gotten things taken care of, I'm sure, talk to Stephen, I know you have already, and I'm sure Stephen's done exactly what we can do, because I know Stephen, but you can talk to him, I'll talk to him afterwards, but, you know, you're not going through any, but, stuff that other people have...
I talked to Stephen, and he said, well, it's just cosmetic, it doesn't have any structural value, so, they're building this Rexon over here, somebody goes out there, messes up the concrete, does that mean, oh, it's just, it's just cosmetic, who cares? You're not going to tell the police to arrest him?
You know what, I can't answer your question, I know Stephen's been working with you on this for, for quite a while, so, any resolution that you were going to get, you've gotten already, as far as I'm concerned, unless the council votes differently tonight. So...
Presentation of assessment.
Okay. We did, that was the presentation that Stephen did. There's no written objections?
Resolution.
And we need the resolution declaring the cost. We need a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Next, D, we need a resolution adopting the assessment role.
Don't we have to go through B, C?
Do what?
Do we have to do B?
Just did C.
So, or he has to do that written objection on his own?
Yeah.
Okay.
Once again, resolution, we need a resolution for adopting the assessment role.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Um, David?
I'm talking through the window.
Okay, we're gonna move forward. Under petitions and requests, eight is a resolution approving the tax levy for 2019. Mr. Dankert.
Uh, yes, council, before you tonight is the culmination of several months of budget review and tax levy review. We had our truth in taxation hearing on December fourth for at which time council, um, proposed the tax levy for 2019, payable in 2019, at six million eight hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. And we'd request council official approval on that tonight.
Council, you need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving the budget for 2019. We need a resolution.
David.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Number ten is a resolution authorizing the cancellation of certain ad valorem tax levies. What is that, Tom?
These are taxes, uh, tax levies that you are authorized to pass via resolution when the bond issues were done. One of them is the bonds for the Lansing Township annexation when we did the sewer in it. The other one is the capital improvement bonds in 2015A, which are the Austin Utilities Facility Bonds. They built the new facility. Both of those have an alternate revenue stream. We have assessments coming in or the utilities through their user fees paying the debt on that. So we don't have to pass a levy onto the citizens to pay that, even though we have the right to. When we issued the bonds, we said we would do that if we didn't have these payments. So since we have other payments coming in, we need to cancel those levies so that they're not put on the taxes for citizens to pay.
That it?
Yep.
Council, you need a resolution.
So move. Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution establishing license fees and miscellaneous operational fees for 2019. Ms. Kiesel?
Yes, this is the license fees and operational fees for, um, next year that we pass every year. Um, I will note that we also added the administrative citations and the rental housing fees, um, from the copy that you have. And those are the exact same amounts that were passed last year. It's just, we just didn't have them on this particular schedule.
Council, if there's no questions, we need a resolution.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a resolution granting 2019 licenses for the sale of hard liquor on sale, Sunday liquor, Sunday hard liquor on sale, Sunday wine on sale, and three-two beer on and off sale. Ms. Kiesel?
This is our last round of liquor licenses for the year, so I would just request that we approve, um, the licensees in the resolution.
Council, we need a resolution. So move. Is there a second?
Aye.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Abstain.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you. Thirteen is a resolution establishing polling locations for 2019. Are they moving?
No, they're not. But the legislature passed a law that, um, requires cities to designate polling locations every year regardless if we have an election or not. So nothing's changing. We're just going through the motion to follow the statute here.
That's a really smart rule. We need a, we need a resolution.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second? Uh, Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Can't be too safe. All right. Uh, fourteen is a resolution accepting the 2019 Hormel Foundation Grant Awards. Tom?
Yes, the Hormel Foundation Grant Awards were made public early December for the city of Austin. That means four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars worth of grants that, um, we will be receiving. And you can see the breakdown of where each one of the grants went. Um, you notice that two of your items, one of them didn't get included, targeted area redevelopment, which actually was your top pick, discussion about municipal, you know, infrastructure, et cetera, just, and there's not enough cash for all the grants to be funded, so that was not funded. And the pickleball courts, they funded one-third of it at roughly thirty, uh, thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars with the expectations that the individuals involved with pickleball in the city would come up with the funding sources to fund the remaining two-thirds of that. Wanted to have some buy-in.
Or the city.
Huh?
Or the city.
No, it can't all be city.
No, actually, the pickleball players are raising money.
Yeah, they want some, buy-in from all parties.
What's the total cost on that?
Roughly a hundred and ten, but I think Park and Rec will be working on some additional grants.
Okay, good, good. I think there's a need. We saw that.
So, uh, we'd request council approval on that. And then thanks to the Hormel Foundation for the contribution again to us. It was four hundred and twenty-five thousand, but throughout the community this last year, the allocation was over eight and a half million dollars.
And we thank the Hormel Foundation. I don't think people have any clue as to what they add to this community. Council, do you have any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution.
So move.
Is there a second? Uh, Tom?
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Abstain.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes six zero with one abstaining, your honor.
Thank you. Fifteen is a resolution approving the 2019 pay for part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees. Ms. Weakman?
Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, before you is the 2019 seasonal temporary, uh, wage rates, uh, for, um, the positions that are not covered, um, by our labor agreements, against seasonal and part-time. Um, we do this annually, so this is, uh, for 2019. It does reflect an increase to minimum wage, uh, effective January first, 2019. Um, have worked with the department heads and have made some adjustments to some of the positions, um, of the different wage range, wage ranges, um, for, um, certain positions.
Okay, council, any questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for fifteen.
So move the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Sixteen is a motion extending the voluntary furlough policy. Trish?
So this is, um, this is, had been typically something we would bring to you every year. Um, as, we put it in place in, uh, mid-2009, and we had a voluntary furlough program for our employees. Um, I'm requesting a change to have it, have it be a, a policy that's put in place and part of the employee handbook so that we're not coming, or I'm not coming to you each year to, um, extend the guidelines for the furlough policy. Um, it has been useful for our employees. Uh, I do see, or we do see that some of our newer employees who don't have, um, a lot of vacation time when they first start, um, utilize this program. It is a budget savings to the city, uh, for employees who do, um, take unpaid time off. So there is some savings there, um, for the different, um, departments. Uh, employees do have to request the time off as they would any vacation through their supervisors. So I'm just looking for, um, approval of the voluntary furlough policy.
How can we just don't put this in the contract? Then we don't have to deal with it every year.
Well, this is, by approving it tonight as a policy and made part of the handbook, we will not, I will not have to bring it to you every year.
Okay.
Uh, but it, but it will not be part of, um, the labor agreements for the employees.
Council, any questions, comment? If not, we need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Seventeen is a motion approving a revised health insurance policy. Trish, you're up again.
Uh, so this, uh, is part of the, uh, change that we're going from a self-insured health insurance to a fully insured plan in 2019. Um, our previous policy for our health insurance specifically identified self-insurance or self-funded plan, um, in, in the policy document. So this is an update or a revision to the policy, which includes, um, the option for self-funded plan or a fully insured plan, which we're moving to for 2019. Um, just update to the policy.
Trish did a lot of work on this, so thanks. It was, health insurance isn't easy, is it? Uh, council, do we have any questions on this? Number seventeen. If not, we need a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Eighteen is a motion appointing Jeff Baker to the Austin Utility Board, term expiring December 31st, 2020. Any questions? If not, we need a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nineteen is a resolution approving an ICM agreement with GNR Truck Wash. Stephen?
Yes, uh, we bring these to you periodically. This is to regulate the flow and discharge from GNR Truck Wash. Um, y'all are probably familiar with that, uh, facility in that they have some outstanding loans with the city, and they are current on their loans. Uh, Mr. Dankert watches those closely and sometimes has to do some, uh, reminders, but they are current on their loans. So, uh, we have developed an ICM agreement with them. This is the same as, uh, what has been developed in the past. And it is a three-year agreement that would take us out to December 31st of 2021. And we'd recommend, uh, approval of this agreement contingent upon receiving a signed original document from GNR Truck Wash by December 31st of 2018. We actually need a, an inked original for our files, um, according to MPCA regulations.
Okay. Uh, council, any questions or comments? Now we need a resolution for nineteen.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. Twenty is a resolution approving a rural fire service agreement with Austin and Lansing Township's chief.
Uh, the department provides rescue and fire services to both Austin and Lansing Township. Our current contract with the townships expires, uh, at the end of this year. Um, it's the desire of both the townships and the city of Austin to enter into a new three-year agreement through 2021. Um, back, uh, when they were negotiating the 2013 through 15 contract, land values were, um, skyrocketing for the townships, um, which made the, uh, the contract, um, really expensive for the townships. And it didn't take into, it, into account the, the true value of the property we were protecting out there. We were protecting a lot of crop land. Um, I was not in on negotiating the 2013 contract, but, um, a hundred and thirty thousand was a number that was settled upon. Um, when we redid the contract in sixteen, that amount went up, uh, to a hundred and thirty-five thousand. Um, it was a desire, um, with this contract for, uh, us to have a, a formula to base our contract off of. Um, when Mr. Clark and I went out to the, uh, townships, we brought the city township model fire contract, um, to them, and they, and that takes into account the fire calls, population, market value, and budget. Um, we feel it's a better, um, formula that, that, um, is a true representation of what they should be paying, uh, out of our budget. Um, it does, uh, reduce the amount of money that comes into the city for those, uh, townships. Uh, the current contract, like I said, is a hundred and thirty-five thousand. That expires at the end of this year. Um, next year it would be a hundred and thirty thousand. Um, the following year would be, um, an average of what they would pay based on the formula and the a hundred and thirty thousand. So that would be roughly a hundred and twenty thousand. And the formula for 2021 would be roughly a hundred and ten thousand. These numbers are subject to calls, market value, population at those times. Um, it was a desire to townships for us to take into account the, the land that's being annexed into the city. So, uh, overall, it will be a reduction in our, our payments from the township for fire services.
But it'll simplify it going forward and be fair.
Correct.
Did you have something to add?
Yeah, the only other item I'd, uh, add to that is the, uh, it's a slight modification from the league township model contract. Uh, we have a multiplier for the number of fire calls with the number of fire calls being low, so low in the township. We felt it was, uh, necessary to add the multiplier to that, um, for the city's benefit. And, uh, the annexations and land loss, the township members, you know, were concerned about that. So going into the negotiation, uh, they were hoping for a reduction. We felt this model was fair. Um, obviously, we tried to mitigate in the short term the loss to the city, and over time, we can accommodate for that in the formula adopted by the league and township as a model. Thank you.
All right, thank you, guys. Questions, council? If not, we need a resolution for number twenty. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dankert.
Councilmember King.
Aye.
Austin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Hagan.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Enright.
Aye.
Councilmember Largie Anderson.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, your honor.
Thank you. And finally, our last motion of the evening is twenty-one is a motion approving, and we're gonna do this all at once. I'll, I'll read them off. If anybody has any, uh, anything to say.
It says removed from the agenda.
Yeah, right. And we're gonna, twenty-one, um, is Joel Raymond, uh, he had a, he moved. He's not, no longer around here. So we still have an opening for the Human Rights Commission? And what else do we have an opening for? We have an opening for George's job. We haven't really, don't have any applications. So council, you know, if you have any ideas. Otherwise, George, you might be stuck there for a while.
We're always accepting applications for boards and commissions, and that's on our website. And the details of the, all the boards and commissions are listed on there, too.
Okay, okay, good. So what we're gonna be doing tonight is reappointments. Howard Nepp to the Cable TV Committee, term expiring. Do I need to read all these, David? Okay, if anybody wants to read them, read them when you're, we're done here, I guess, because you've got them and you can see them. Twenty-one, we need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.[1501.71]
opposed? Okay, and...
Do you wanna do the appointments, or is that all in one motion?
Uh, you, okay, well, I didn't say that. Should probably do it. Appointments are Ron Felton, I don't know, we took that, oh, no, that's part of the same thing, isn't it?
The first ones were reappointments, and these are...
Okay, so we'll do the same thing with appointments. We need a motion.
So moved.
So, is it, was there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, we are now two citizens addressing the council. Scott, you might say anything. You're like the only non-working citizen out there. Here's your chance.
It's nice to be here.
Okay. Um, honorary council member comments. Well, George...
George wanted, or Marv wanted to say something.
Oh, Marv, come on up and tell us how happy you are, 'cause you're a happy guy.
Thank you, sir. What an august group. They do good work. I'm just calling attention to what all of you may be aware of already. But it was in the paper, in the Austin Herald, a few days ago. Roger Bowden, who is a friend of most of us and very civically committed, uh, had some questions about the raises that have been recommended for, uh, well, all of your positions up here. And, uh, although I think that, uh, those statements are made, his, uh, questions, I would differ with. But, uh, I just have a question after observing for a number of years, uh, members of the council, and some of them are no longer with us. They were voted out, and I think because of the public activity that they observed was, uh, not measuring up. But my question is to the council and to you, Mayor Tom, is there any, um, document or any statement of, uh, what are the responsibilities of council members, and how do they measure up with it? And how do they really fulfill for the public what is expected of them? And what is expected of them? I observe, and it's a very personal observation, with, uh, my attendance at a innumerable number of events in the city, that seldom have council members ever been seen for me in attendance. I do not say that on, uh, on the part of this council, but, um, my, my question is, is there some document or some statement of what would be the expectations?
Well, I think what you're talking about is...
Where people could be evaluated.
I think it's an election ballot.
Yeah, you have that.
You stand for election, and the voters vote for us. It's up to them to decide if we're doing our jobs or not.
Well, thank you. My other concern is with the Lansing debate that goes on, and I, uh, serve temporarily a church that is no longer there, a Methodist church. But, um, I wish you well in dealing with the Lansing people. Uh, one of my former members there, uh, was, uh, spoke for many. I, uh, I asked her one day, uh, how come, uh, how come you're so grumpy? And she said, "Oh, I left him in bed." But, uh, that's a, uh, area that's tough to deal with, and I know any number of people there. So if you're having tough with any individuals, which I know some of them by name, uh, take them out for dinner, a good dinner, and I'll reimburse you for the charge. Thank you.
Did I get it ahead of time? Okay. Thank you, Marv. Appreciate your, your insight. George?
Well, um, I just like, I have a question first, and that is, I see David...
David was, uh, laughing, but to your question, uh, a second ago, is, is this going to be my last meeting?
No, we'll keep you through January. Just, it'll give us, we, I haven't thought about the honorary, you know, to be honest with you. We're working on the commission. We have no applications. I have all kinds of ideas, but I haven't reached out to anybody yet, so why don't you come next time and, and we'll work on it. We'll give you, January would be fine with everybody, 'cause we haven't set a, a start or end for, it's three months. We haven't started a beginning or end date, so how about, you wanna be here for another month?
Well, no. Um, you know, I, I'm pretty busy, but, you know, if this, this is really an esteemed body, so if I'm honored to be here, then another month, that's, that's fine with me. I'll try to make it work, so that's all I can say to that. But, but really, I suppose, what I wanted to say today is that, um, it's been quite an experience, frankly, and I think it's, uh, indeed an honor, um, to be here and witness, uh, some of the decisions that you all make on behalf of our city. Um, and I think, uh, personally, I have nothing but, um, praises and commendations for your work. I know it's not easy. I think we have seen, uh, a good testament of that, because not every decision is going to be popular. But I trust that every decision that you make is going to be based on facts and in the interest of the city. And when you are anchored on those beliefs, I think, um, every decision that you make ultimately is gonna bring us value and, uh, move us forward, um, as a community. So I, I commend those efforts sincerely. Um, the other thing I wanted to say today is that I think, um, listening to, uh, Mr. Dankert and, uh, some of the, the contributions that we get from some of the, the businesses within our communities, like a good one, obviously, would be, um, the Formal Foundation, for instance. Um, I think we have, um, these major players within our community that are making great differences or impacts, um, it, within our community and the lives of our younger generations and, um, you know, um, the city of Austin at large. So I think I would recommend, this is just my personal opinion, I think the city and the council can figure out a way we can actually engage, or maybe have some form of, um, um, you know, formal relationship building, even if it is going to be maybe some recommendations, or, um, if you will, uh, recognition, if you will. I, I take back recommendation, but some recognition, if you will. Um, be it a formal event where we recognize their contribution and their presence and the significant stance that they have taken in, they continue to take in our community, I think it's gonna further strengthen those relationships. It, so to speak, it's going to be, if you will, um, a way to demonstrate to them that indeed their presence and contribution is significant, is significant to us, the city and the council, being able to overcome and meet some of the challenges that we face as we continue to aspire for better, um, community engagement and things like that in the future. And I think it is also going to serve as, uh, if you will, um, a way to, um, you know, bring attention, um, to that partnership, to so many people that are also within the community. Um, seeing some of these events, uh, occur, I think it's, it's, it's gonna generate, if you will, an interest to reach out and partner, continue to partner and strike new relationships with the city and continue to bring more good, uh, within our community. And I think this is great, uh, quite frankly. I think Hormel, quite, I don't know how, um, personally and working at Riveland, I'll tell you that they have been nothing but the greatest partner, the gift that keeps giving. And I, and I think, uh, their presence in our community is great. The one thing I wanna say to, um, to the, to the council and the city to look at, um, I, I think it's gonna be along the lines of, um, housing, for instance, okay? Uh, we do have, uh, newcomers into the city. Um, of course, we all come from different backgrounds and different walks of life and experiences and things like that. Uh, there are those that are within our community who contribute, uh, be it in, uh, working within our city limits and paying taxes and contributing in so many other ways. Um, I think it is important that, um, we engage, particularly along the lines of, let's say, home, you know, um, landlords within our community. Uh, one of the things that personally I've been privy to, because, um, as you all know, I'm ve- I'm very active within the community, not just Riveland, uh, not just the Riveland community, but the Austin community, the immigrant community in, in Austin. And one of the things that I hear much of, and I'm not going to name a particular property, for instance, but if, if an immigrant, or if someone has, uh, let's say, if I rent a two-bedroom, for instance, and I happen to have, assuming my mother comes to live with me, and I have a two-bedroom, and the property manager says, "Well, your mother, you have to do an application and pay five-hundred-dollar application, uh, uh, have to pay a fifty-dollar application fee, and your mother have to pay rent as well." I think that's creating undue burden on the resident. Personally, I do not think the property owners or management itself is privy to some of these happenings in, in their, on their properties. But sadly, the people that they put on these places, um, to run the management, the day-to-day management of some of these rental properties, I think, to some degree, are taking advantage of some of these new immigrants who find themselves sometimes are not privy, maybe they are not well-informed, and they are taking advantage of unnecessarily. How we can actually overcome some of these things is to make sure, uh, that indeed we have, um, proper control. Maybe we have, um, some, and I don't know how the oversight on some of these property owners is conducted within the city, but I think that may be something that, uh, we might wanna pay close attention to, to make sure that people are not, um, unnecessarily burdened, uh, for no reason. And I, and I'm aware of some, a few issues that I, I don't think it's right to name a property, but some of these things are happening, and I think it's unfortunate that they continue to be the case amongst our city.
We're trying to address some of that with our rental ordinance.
Right.
You know, that's our first step. We'll see how it works, and we can move on from there. We can leave it, you know, but, okay.
Yeah, so I just wanted to bring it, and I know some of, some of what I, uh, the issues that I brought up, obviously, are things that you guys are already aware of and, uh, probably working on. So, but then, you know, being a newcomer here, sometimes I may set you guys back a little bit, but I hope, and I appreciate your indulgence. Um, the other, the other aspect here that, that I wanted, the other thing I wanted to mention is, and I think I kinda talked about this on my first night here, um, you know, I think I wanna see more, and I don't, I'm not suggesting that it's not happening, I wanna see more community policing. I, I wanna make sure, I want us to make sure as a city, uh, particularly for the newcomers, um, newcomer, uh, communities in this, in the city of Austin, I want us to make sure that they feel, um, there is a partnership. The police are not against them, right? Our law enforcement are not working against any citizen or resident of the city of Austin. How we can strike that balance and, uh, build a partnership with them to recognize that we are in this together to make sure we continue to aspire for a better community for everybody. I think it's critical to being able sometimes, um, to find what is really wrong, uh, some of the crimes that are happening in some of these communities. I think the police need the partnership with some of these, uh, individuals, uh, to be able to at least, uh, find out or discover, uh, some of the, um, crimes before they actually happen. And I think, uh, prevention, in my view, I think ultimately, um, is better than really trying to solve the problem itself. Uh, so these are some of the things that I think are very critical, and I, and I am, I'm, I'm sure that you guys are already doing this, like I said, uh, if you're not privy to some of the happenings in the past, certainly, I may to some degree maybe set you guys back a little bit, but these are things that I think are critical in our community, and I hope we'll continue to, uh, figure out ways to harness those relationships and, and look, and build a better future for everybody. Thank you all.
George, I would ask you, if you get an opportunity sometime to go into the, maybe give Brian or Dave a call and go in and see, you know, what has been done, what we've tried, and what we haven't tried, and maybe some of your ideas. At least, if it, Brian, would you sit down with George if you have an opportunity sometime and just, you know, 'cause some of the stuff that you've talked about, we've tried, and for reasons it has and hasn't worked. It might work again, uh, you know, now that we have, our immigrant population is up quite a bit. Why don't you have a talk with Brian and, and Dave, and I'll give you, you'll know more about how, what's going on and what we've done and what we're looking at and trying to accomplish. I think you're, you've got some great ideas, and, and we're so interested. I mean, the reason you're sitting there is we wanna know what people that don't like us think, or that don't look like us think. You know, what's going on in those communities, and how can we promote them and better serve them? And, and, and that's one of the reasons you're sitting here.
Well, just quickly, and I think maybe the chief might be, might, this might jog your memory somewhat, but you know, my, I have a, my nephew that is going to school at Riveland.
Mm-hmm.
Um, he doesn't live with me right now, uh, because he's not showing any responsibility, so I kick him out so that he can rent and understand that there is a responsibility to, yeah. So, so anyways, last summer, what happened is, um, he and another kid, we're driving somebody's vehicle, and, uh, they went off the road and hit somebody's house. So to my surprise, the mother to the other kid asked him to abandon the vehicle and take off. And then the mother picked up the phone and called the police and said, "Hey, somebody just hit somebody's house. I don't know who did." So the police were on their trail, and to some degree, my nephew then panicked. And that's when he came to me and said, "I don't know, man, I'm in trouble." And I said, "What did you do?" And he said, "Well, Uncle, I gotta tell you, it wasn't me. Um, but I gave somebody, uh, somebody's, an individual's car that was with me for safekeeping, and they ended up hitting, now we know, she doesn't even have a, a license." And I said, "Really?" And I said, "So what did you do?" "Well, her mother said we should run." So what I did, I, I put him in my vehicle, and I went after the mother, and I said, "You better do the right thing right now, and I'm disappointed that this is what you're doing." I said, "These kids need to make sure they understand and take responsibility for their actions." So I said, "I'm taking him to the police station right now, so you might as well do the same with your daughter." So I brought my daughter into the police station to make a report so that he can take responsibility for some. And these are the things that are very critical, because if we continue to propagate some of these good behaviors, I think it's ultimately is good for the city, and it limits your work to focus on the more important issues that face you guys, your departments and so on.
All right, thank you, George. Well, we'll, we'll be back. You know, we've got two more meetings anyway. Judy, we're gonna start with you on the, uh, 'cause you, this is your last time you're gonna be able to...
Well, I would just like to, to thank everyone for the support I've had over the last eight years, and I've really enjoyed working with this council and, and a few on the past councils.
Not all of them, though.
The staff, the staff have been really wonderful. And I feel that we've accomplished a lot in the last eight years, and I have many things to be proud of.
Judy, you've been a great council member, too. You really have.
Thank you.
You came in here trying to do more than was humanly possible, or smart. I mean, you just, you just, you went out, I mean, you really worked. It's great to see that, and you really never let that go, so you've been fun to work with.
Thank you.
And then we got Steve.
I have anything to say.
Uh, yeah, I'll take the opportunity to say I'm gonna miss the outgoing council folks, even Judy. She's kinda been fun to anchor down here with, and, and she has done a great job, as Dave and Janet has, and, uh, the years, uh, that you guys have put in, and the city's better off for it, so thank you all.
Yep. Dave here, Jeffrey?
I guess I'd just like to echo those comments. Uh, thank David and Janet and Judy for their s- service on the council and to the, the residents of Austin. Uh, it's been a pleasure working with you, and, uh, you will be missed.
Yeah, for sure. Janet?
I just have a couple comments, too. Um, my ten years on city council concludes tonight, and, and after the recognition that we just gave to all those city employees with their plaques of like thirty-six years and thirty-three, it seems, pales in comparison, but, but I conclude a decade of serving. I wanna take just a moment to express my deep gratitude to so many, and first to the citizens of Austin that have supported me and shared their ideas and expertise and, and feedback, and also to the extraordinary team of dedicated professionals that make up the city staff. Wow, I've learned so much and, and really appreciate all that you do every day. And of course, to Mayor Steem and my council colleagues for over ten years. And it's been an ongoing learning and growth process, and I've taken the responsibility seriously and can look back at a wide range of solid work with a focus on positive development and progress and sincere efforts to make Austin an even better place to live, work, and enjoy quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. You've been a joy to work with, really have. Laura?
Uh, I just wanna say that it's a night that really makes me proud, um, to be part of the city, to see people retiring who, who wanted to work here for decades, and I hope we continue to be that kind of employer. Um, I'm really proud of the other council members who are ending their service with us tonight. I'm very proud of our, um, boards and commissions. Um, I'm very proud of our budget and our, uh, capital improvement plan. Uh, might not be the sexiest of documents, but they, um, are really fundamental to the work that we do, and I'm proud that they're at a high level of excellence. And I'm also proud of our honorary council member, um, program, and can't wait to see it, uh, grow and evolve. Um, I think that, uh, yeah, overall, just, uh, we're doing a really great job, and, and I appreciate everybody's part in it.
It's kinda hard to tell people you're do, you think you're doing a good job, but we, I think we're doing, we have a good council here. This is the best council I've seen.
It must be the staff.
It must be. Well, it is, for sure. David?
Well, I, I tell you, this was a great experience, and it was a pleasure working for the city of Austin and seeing such a great community and the future that it has. Uh, the future is definitely bright for us in Minnesota. It's a community where we have great infrastructure. Our roads are better than most of the cities, and our, our police, uh, are great, the fire department's great. Uh, I tell you, the nature center is something to be proud of. We've got the Hormel Institute. I mean, we've got a lot to be proud of, and I, I tell you, I'm just humbled to be part of it. And I'm, might not be on the council, but I will be participating in other programs.
Well, Dave, thank you, you know, and you kinda bring something. We don't really have a lot of business experience on the council, and I know you're somewhat, you, you know, those are your friends, and I don't know how much of a businessman you are yourself or have been, but, you know, you brought some of that, and that's good, because we don't wanna get, you know, we wanna cover everybody, and we do kinda... Yeah, if there's one thing I'd like to see in the future, business, a businessman or two get on the, on the, you know, of course, boards are all business people, men or women, that doesn't matter. Okay, well, thanks, Dave. Yeah, you've been a bright spot, for sure. Paul?
I also wanna thank Dave and Janet and Judy for your service and all your contributions. Uh, thank you.
Yep. Greg, what do we got?
Uh, we had the pleasure of having Keith Elson, uh, elect attorney general, uh, for the state of Minnesota, swung by, uh, this afternoon through Austin, so it was nice to make introductions with him and, uh, learn a little bit, uh, about what his interests are and focus, so, uh, hopefully that was a start of a relationship as we so need. Um, and then, uh, to Judy, thank you for your humor, um, in our discussions. Janet, your passion, and Dave, your connections. We appreciate all those, uh, contributions to the council, and don't be a stranger. Please let us know, uh, if there's something going on, uh, please reach out to us. Thank you.
That's it? No reports?
Chief Krieger has one.
Brian?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to remind you all that, uh, one of our lieutenants, Dustin Wollenberg, will be attending the FBI Academy starting in January seventh through March fourteenth. It's been a two-year process, and we are very grateful that we have your support to further, uh, our department by educating them and training them and providing them the great leadership that he will get from the academy, so thank you very much.
Any else? No.
I forgot to mention our fabulous library, too.
I just wanna say, eh, I've been here for twelve years, and this really has been a great council. Not because everybody agrees, it's because everybody looks forward, and it's, you know, I think we've had council members in the past and where they wanted it to be about them instead of about the city of Austin, and I think everybody here gets it, and by get it, I mean, they want a better city, and they're willing to work for it, and we have different views on how to get there, but that's a good thing. Uh, and we have, our staff now, I think, is, there's not a weak spot in our, well, maybe Holly, but besides... I mean, really, there's not a we, and Holly knows that, like, there's not a weak spot in our staff right now. We really are, things are going really well right now, right now. I just wanna thank the council, and I wanna thank the staff, too, 'cause you guys really are the ones that are the city of Austin. When they say the city of Austin, they're not talking about us, they're talking about the people that work for Austin, and that's you guys, and we wouldn't be here without you, and we wouldn't be in such good shape without you, the Craigs, and the Tom Dankerts, and the Anns, and Hollies, and Stevens, and Jim, and Brian, and, yeah, you too, George. We would...
I just wanted to echo some of those sentiments, because I think you have a great team, uh, by way of your staff, and I have had the opportunity of, uh, visiting elements, and the first contact I had was, obviously, Ann, remember? And, uh, the reception, I think, makes a difference, because you are in a public, uh, setting, and you represent the entire city, you are in face of the city. And I think your professionalism and the way you receive people is critical, and I think that, that was the first thing I picked up, was the first thing I came in contact with, really. And the same goes for, uh, uh, Tom. Holly has been, actually, visited her office, she gave me, uh, if you would, a crash course on some of the things that she does. And, uh, I think the city is lucky to have you as well. And, uh, I can't say anything about Stephen, because I, I think you're, you are great. But, uh, with, with that, I, I just wanna say, too, though, uh, back to the council, I think this is a great party, and I think you guys all should be proud of yourselves. I'm really, really, um, empowered by what... I'm really, really empowered by what I see, camaraderie and the work that you do. By the way, Janet, your passion is one that really tells me you love the city. I know how many times you came to Riveland and really talked to me about running for city council. And I, and I keep telling you, no, but I've never told you, and you keep coming back. And I think you do it with a passion that really shows a commitment. So this is, this is a big group. I learned about it.
Thank you. And as I go about, you still talk to people and say Austin is, is, you know, shrinking and dying and stuff. And I think everybody here recognizes that we're lighting the spark right now, I, I think. And it basically mostly goes back to the foundation. But when you have the Hormel Foundation in town, the only way you're gonna screw it up is by people like us not doing a good job. So our future is so bright in this town. I tell people, I wish I'd be around in fifty years to see what it looks like, you know? Because we know where we're heading. So I thank everybody. With that, unless anybody else has anything, we need a motion to adjourn till Monday, January seventh, two thousand nineteen, at five-thirty in the council chambers.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? See you next year.